Parking Systems, that's 4BA1. And we have a presentation from Mr. Monty Falls with regard to...
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm going to be really brief. We were asked at the last meeting to put some information together to bring back to council. And you see that in your packet in that short memo. But for the benefit of those watching and the folks in the audience, I'll go over and hit the highlights of it. And then Cindy Lawson, our Finance Director, and I, who put this information together, will be here to answer any questions that you might have regarding this information. But again, at the September 18th meeting, council asked us to get some information on parking systems. And we contacted about 10 vendors. Four of them responded. Cindy and I spent about an hour each with them on conference calls. And those people were companies were Lanier Parking Systems, Parkion, and they both are vendors that supply the materials, the kiosk and the hardware. Two of the vendors that talked to us were app-based vendors who are payment systems, and those were Park Mobile and Passport. So after we talked to them, it brings us to some decisions that we would have to make if we decide to go forward. And there's basically the technology, there's different types. The mobile app-based, again, like I said, is a software system that deals with the payments. And the meter kiosk-based system are the physical kiosks that are placed in the ground. They can be used alone. Some cities do that, simply app-based or simply kiosk-based. Or some cities, for convenience, do an integrated system where they have the kiosk-based and also have the flexibility of using app-based payments. You can also, with the kiosk, you can pay with credit card or debit card, and you can do that with your mobile apps. And those kiosks allow you to pay with currency or coin. That does drive up the maintenance costs because the bill readers are really maintenance-intensive. And it also brings in some security reasons when you're out collecting that money out of the systems. There are three different types of payment bases. Pay-in-display, if you've gone to a place that has a kiosk that you have to get a ticket and bring it back and put it in your car, that's called pay-in-display. It's kind of the, was one of the first of the systems, but it's losing popularity because of the convenience. You have to go to the kiosk and come back to your vehicle. Pay-by-space is one of the newer ones, where we number all the parking spaces. You get out of your vehicle, you look and see what space you're in. If you're doing it on your app, you put it on your app. If you go to the kiosk, you plug it in on the kiosk. And then there's a software system that the enforcement can use that knows when that space was activated. The last of the three is pay-by-plate, and it's the newer technology. And it's where you either enter your license plate number through the app that you pay for or at the kiosk. And the enforcement then uses a license plate recognition software. It's actually a device that's mounted in a vehicle that as they drive around, it scans the license plate. So once you have paid for a parking session, you've got your license plate number in, the vehicle that's driving around doing the enforcement scans those license plate and knows how long you've been in that space or in the district itself. So that's basically the types of systems that are out there. And next step, so we would have to move forward with, and believe me, staff is not making a recommendation on whether we should go with paid parking or not. That's clearly a policy decision. But as we talk to the vendors, they all had this same statement. Paid parking is a management tool which can be utilized to influence parking behavior. So that's a tough decision. You guys are going to have to, you know, make that decision if you want to move forward. We'd recommend the following things to do if you wanted to implement a system. Select an integrated system, including both app and kiosk-based systems, to offer citizens the flexibility of using those two different types. Select a system that uses pay-by-plate technology. It's the current technology. It's the easiest to enforce. And select a system that has the flexibility to accept payment by credit or debit card or by app, but not using cash, coins or bills, just because of the maintenance and the security. And then finally, if you would want to move forward, just allow the staff to go out and talk to an operator and bring back a turnkey operation where that operator would do the installation, maintenance, operation of the system, and also provide enforcement. Couple of the ones we talked to, they do it totally turnkey. They have their own enforcers. They actually call them parking ambassadors. And they are not, they are not, they don't derive their revenue from writing tickets. So it's not something there, like the red light cameras were when that was all the rage and, you know, you only generate revenue for somebody doing a violation. The revenue is generated by the parking fees and then convenience fees for the app-based systems for using the app. But the enforcement and the tickets are written just to keep the people from staying in the spaces too long and not as a revenue generator. And with that, we'll answer any questions that we can that you might have.
Have you been able to estimate any revenues would come about because of such a system?
And as you can see, I have the numbers person coming to the podium.
So I just, from the initial comments, like if we're going to do this, it sounds like we, I really like your turnkey recommendation. I do have a question, though, about the difference between the pay-by-plate versus pay-by-space. And is one more expensive to do than the other, or is this harder to enforce? Because those license plate readers are not cheap either. I was just...
The vendors kind of indicated to us that the pay-by-plate, if it were two or three years ago, would be very cutting-edge, but that once it became more popular, a lot more people jumped into the business. And then now the license plate recognition readers have gone down in price and up in effectiveness. And most of them we talked to, I think Monty would agree, said that's really the way to go. One of the things they pointed out, the difference between pay-by-space and pay-by-plate, is if you do pay by space and someone leaves the space before the time is up, that space is still paid for for the rest of the time. Whereas if someone's doing it by plate and decides to leave before their time is up, the next person that pulls in will generate revenue for you again. And so, you know, if you've paid for two hours, three hours, and you decide to leave after an hour and a half, and it's based on your plate, the next person that comes is going to also pay. Whereas if the space is blocked out and paid for for three hours, it won't matter who's in it.
One nice thing about that, by paying by the plate instead of the space, is if you're shopping at different places, at different ends of Ocean Drive, you paid once, but you pay, you move to the other space, not like you have to pay again for your space. So that does sound appealing.
They can geofence it in whatever size districts you want. And so, yes, if you wanted Ocean Drive, the whole thing to be one location, you're right, you could move from place to place.
Ocean and Cardinal, the whole area should be one space. So if people want to shop at different places, it's convenient for them, especially...
Lot of flexibility there. So they can do it however you like. But that's a good point. As far as the revenue, you know, I will say, I don't have any idea. We don't have any idea how much the turnkey operation side of it would cost. So again, they make their money, the app makes their money by convenience fee that gets charged to the customer. It doesn't come out of our side of the revenue. But to pay a turnkey operator, we literally have no idea how much. However, you know, I was certainly, from a starting point of could we pay for the shuttle? And if I'm not mistaken, then what I heard was $200,000 a year after the $40,000 for the vehicle, if that's correct. And so, without nailing them to a number, I hit several of these vendors with, hey, you know, given the number of spaces, we showed them the map, given them the typical turnover. And they do Delray Beach, St. Augustine, Fernandina Beach, you know, very similarly situated small beach towns. Do you think we would net enough revenue to pay at least for the shuttle at 200,000? And most of them seemed very confident that we could do that. I've run some independent numbers, but again, you know, and I've looked at, say, like Delray Beach. If we did all of Cardinal, all of Ocean, all the lots in the side streets, you know, you might be looking at, their estimate was 2,500 per metered space per year. But again, that's going to drive the costs up, too, and I really don't know what the net would be. So I can say comfortably that you could generate enough to pay for the shuttle at 200,000. How much more than that it would be really depends on utilization, and that's something that I don't know that I have a prediction for.
Could you comfortably say that we would not be upside-down on the technology barring the shuttle? In other words, if we didn't have enough for the shuttle, we would still have enough revenue to cover all of our expenses?
Cover the cost of the technology? That seems to make sense, because again, you have some choices with them. And I think, I'll let Monty jump in here, too. But basically, all of them said that you're going to buy the equipment regardless, whether you want to finance it over time through them or pay for it upfront or finance it yourself. And so, they all suggested that the minimum payback time that they would look to, or the minimum contract they'd look to would be five years. The equipment is going to be fairly expensive and amortizing that over five years, plus the 200,000. Again, I feel pretty comfortable that we could at least cover costs. It might be better than that, but I hesitate to make that prediction. I think right now, at least, if our goal is to solve a problem and pay for the shuttle, which, from the discussion I heard last time, those two things really need to go hand-in-hand. If you create paid parking, you need to create an option for those people who, say, like work in the businesses and need a way to get there. And I also heard, if I'm correct in your discussion last time, the shuttle really doesn't work without an incentive, which is the paid parking. You could cover those costs.
You are correct, because we're not trying to do this to create revenue. We're trying to do this to help the parking situation. So I just didn't want to see the city in a position where, oh, we're losing.
Right. I think you could, I think you could cover the operation. I think there's a chance, depending on utilization, you could create some revenue. But again, if we go in with just the goal of covering the costs of the shuttle and making it just work in synergy with that, if we can get some numbers out of the vendors as to what their annual costs are for the turnkey, then we can define better what the excess might be. It also depends on what you decide the per-hour rate's going to be. So many other choices that you have to make. I know you want to talk about that.
That's exactly, you know, you made the comment, you know, will it cover those expenses? And it depends on the rate. And most of the folks that we talked to were the cities they serviced, the cities similar hours were the dollar an hour rate for the initial time period. And those that were trying to create turnover, like we have our, whatever our time parking is, two-hour or three-hour, they modified the rate after that time, so it increased. So it would create an incentive to move out of the district, so somebody wouldn't park in there all day. And you can set those escalating rates at different, you know, tiers. So if you wanted, if somebody wanted to stay an extra hour, you might, could charge $2 an hour. If you wanted to stay for an extra two hours, you might want to go up from there. But there's different ways you can do it, different ways to structure that.
As opposed to, for instance, the three hours and you're done that you have now? You could give people the opportunity, but it would just, the cost would go up. And again, or not, there's so many things that you can do. And the systems that are combination app and kiosk, the backend of particularly one of the vendors we talked to, their backend software and the things that you can change kind of without a lot of effort are pretty impressive, as well as the metrics that you get from them. So we're not talking about something where Monty's crew will have to go out and change science every time we decide to take a different approach. And you may do something different seasonally, you know. It might be different in the summer than it is during season. And that's something that, again, that they can do fairly easily for you. So there's some good technology out there. Pretty much all the cities that these companies have worked with here in Florida have done that combination app and kiosk, as Monty pointed out. The flexibility is there, and it's absolutely a policy decision.
They also mentioned to us, as we talked to them, we said, how many kiosks do you need to service? How many parking spaces can you service with one? And they said, usually eight to 10 is the average number of spaces you serve with one kiosk. So that's what we'd be looking at. We have 750 spaces, you know, 70 to 75 kiosks.
They are, for the most part, though, they're solar. So the installation is fairly straightforward. And of course, we asked the question, you know, what happens when it rains for a week? And one vendor told us they have them in Minnesota, and they work just fine on the solar. One vendor has them all over Savannah, Georgia, underneath all the tree canopy, and they work fine. And then the vendor that does the turnkey operation, they carry spare batteries onboard the vehicles as well, just in case, so...
And as, to piggyback, that, if we do the turnkey, we have the enforcement, that enforcement vehicle would also be the person that's looking after the kiosk and have the batteries in there as well. And if they had a problem, he goes straight to the kiosk and takes care of it.
As far as their enforcement, too, I know the term parking ambassador sounds a little humorous, but what they did suggest in that regard is when you, if you were to do this and roll it out, you have a soft rollout. And that person for a few weeks just is there on the street explaining to people that this is how, this is what we're doing now. And then maybe for a few weeks, they just write kind of oops tickets, and that you don't just put in a bunch of kiosks and one day, and the next day, you know, bam, it's parking fees and tickets, that there's ways to, you know, sort of acclimate people and do a soft rollout on it to keep people in the mode as well, so...
Any questions, Council?
So for the technological nerds...
Is that what you were?
The technological nerds, what's the backup port? Do you have to have an app? Do you have to have that kind of capability?
You don't have to have the app. What was interesting about the app, and one of the ones we talked to, Park Mobile, is the biggest one. They do parking systems in Boston, in New York, and all over the Northeast. They have a huge market penetration throughout the United States. And what they pointed out is that for our seasonal residents and our visitors from that area of the country, many of them may already actually have the app on their phone, and will pull up and see the, you know, Park Mobile sign and go, great, Park Mobile, I'm all set. Because they might have their vehicles already listed, the rest of it, their credit card numbers in. The apps are pretty easy to download and set yourself up with as well.
But are you required to download an app in order to use it?
No. Because if you don't want to use the app, you can get out of your car, again, with the system we're suggesting. If you prefer not to have that app, you can just get out of your car, walk to the kiosk, put in your credit or debit card, and put your license plate number in and pay that way. It's just one of those things that if you'd rather have an app...
Yeah, no, yeah, I get it. But you can't write a check and insert it into the machine.
Damn.
I'm talking about the bogus coins. The bogus coins is what I was going towards.
Well, you know, again, the coins and the cash, the coins themselves are one thing. The bill readers, not only do they make the machines themselves substantially more expensive, I mean, we were told up to $1,500 more expensive per kiosk just for the bill readers than without. But also, again, as Monty pointed out, maintenance, they jam, security problems, coins jam, I mean, it's...
What is the, I'm trying to quantify what the potential risk could be if we say, okay, yeah, let's execute this plan and find out six months or a year later that the public says, oh, hell no.
You would have a combination of some pretty substantial one-time costs that you sunk into the capital, plus whatever cancellation fee that the vendor who's doing the turnkey chooses to put in their contract, because they will, if we do it turnkey, they'll make an investment in staffing and, you know, gearing up for Vero Beach. So it's hard to quantify, only because we don't have, we don't have quotes for the kiosks. We know kind of what range they're in. So, you know, we're looking at, I don't know, say, a number.
Three, $3,000 to $4,000 range, you know, it could be a little more, it could be a little less. But if you used 3,075 kiosks, that's 225,000 in capital cost to purchase the kiosk, then they have to be installed and put it, made operational.
So you're looking, okay, so that's the, that's the investment that the city would be putting on the line.
That's if they're 3,000, it could be more.
Plus, plus whatever penalty to get out of the contract.
Right. Because at least one of the vendors we talked to, again, said that they have people who, I mean, the people they hire to work particular contracts live in that area. So, I mean, they're going to make an investment in staff. It's not going to be someone who flies in every day to do our parking enforcement all day and then flies back out. So, you know, they're going to have cancellation fees as well. And the, what, they say the machines have like a 10-year useful life?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what they indicated us, 10 years.
But it's a lot like the contract you have on your Nokia phone or your BlackBerry.
So...
I don't think it's the kind of thing that...
He still has a dial-up.
Let's put the numbers aside for a second on the, on the cost of the kiosk system, because that's something we can obviously work out. What I want to do with everyone here is just talk about a lot of the same issues that we have the last couple of meetings, which is, we have a parking problem. There is not one solution to solve this. There's a lot of different variables that are going to have to come into play to alleviate these issues for the future of Ocean Drive and the Central Beach Business District. You know, in a perfect world, parking would be free everywhere. There's always be an open space in front of the business you wanted to go in. But that's, that's not what's happening. Being mindful of the vibe, if you will, of this community and what people expect, and we've all come to expect free parking for a very long time. Yeah, I think it would be tough to implement paid parking in the entire Central Beach Parking District right off the bat. So some observations that I've had are, you know, when we look at where the real chokehold on parking is, it's Ocean Drive, much more so than it is Cardinal. And we have a vast majority of the businesses that are experiencing the parking issues and complaining about their customers not being able to park in front of the store is on Ocean Drive. I've gotten a lot of feedback from business owners that my customer wouldn't mind paying to park right in front of the store. That's great. So my proposal is something like this, and obviously want to hear the public's feedback. It would be to start with paid parking in Sexton Plaza and on Ocean Drive. That's it. My thought there is that it's going to inevitably free up spaces. You know, we continuously talk about the pressure that's being put on public parking from employees, not just of the hotels and restaurants, but, you know, there's employees as well that work in all the businesses. While that much, certainly a much smaller percentage than what we're experiencing from the hotels, you know, I think a phased approach makes some sense.
Mr. Vice Mayor, may I stop you for just one moment, just for some clarity? It was my understanding that, I thought Jim said that we, for whatever reason, we had to do all or nothing. Did I hear that incorrectly?
It's the Humiston parking lot that I think can't be different than everything else. So it may be Sexton, Humiston, and Ocean Drive, I'm not sure.
The Humiston parking lot, when it was, the grant was used to build that project, there was a stipulation that you couldn't charge disparate, disparate in rates to different users. So anybody that would go in there, you either have to charge city residents, county residents, and visitors all the same, or nothing at all.
Okay, my apologies for interrupting. I just didn't, I thought we were going down a path that wasn't, we weren't able to do.
I've thought through this a little bit. So, you know, basically, we're looking at about 258 spaces on Ocean Drive at your estimate of 2,500 per space annually, 645 in annual revenue from those spaces theoretically, hypothetically.
So there's a lot of, there's a lot of caveats to that hypothetically. You know, that's a certain number of hours of operation. That's, I back calculated it to be almost 58% occupancy, and I don't know if that's real or not. And, you know, that's a dollar per hour. So that's, I mean, there's a lot of if coming off that.
Sure. And again, we're going to have to work through the numbers, just like, you know, we're missing information on a lot of different variables here. But again, my purpose of this is to introduce the concept of how does the community feel about alleviating these issues? There's not, you know, an easy answer here, but some hard decisions are going to have to be made. And so, you know, my thought was a phased approach to this. We may find that paid parking on Ocean Drive has done a great deal to alleviate the ability for someone to patronize a store and be able to park right in front. Great, so we've solved that problem. We, and maybe don't need to put paid parking on Cardinal Drive. You know, that, when I think about each and every individual business there, you have Laughing Dog Galleries got onsite parking. There's a lot of businesses that do have onsite parking on Cardinal. And I think that, you know, that approach to me makes, makes some more sense now. Moving into the future, we could expand paid parking. But I think the other exciting things are, you know, eventually this system's paid off. We are generating revenue from this, and there are some options on what we could do with that revenue. So we either A, have the ability to run this shuttle, and we're going to get pushed back from that. This is the same people that said it didn't work last time, and there were reasons that it didn't work. It wasn't running long enough for employees to take advantage that we're getting off work late or going to work early. So maybe we look at, you know, an extended time period for the shuttle while we're considering the fact that, long-term, we need more spaces. So we have a finite amount of spaces. We've pushed as hard as we can to open up as many as possible. At some point, we're going to need more. You know, we've had offers from private citizens to construct parking garages. Those came with caveats of, we're going to need some cost sharing to make that viable. We've talked about potentially building a parking garage on our own city-owned piece of property by Seacoast Bank. Certainly, revenue from this parking system could be used to pay debt service on a parking garage. We're looking at about 19,000 per space, roughly $3.5 million, we'll split the difference to add an extra 150 spaces on the beach. So, you know, I think that we can find some creative ways to increase parking over a period of time. But in the interim, we have an absolute need to do something to alleviate parking coming into this season. We got store owners that are demanding it, and I think we need to make a move on something. So, you know, my proposal would be, let's listen to public feedback here, but I'd like to consider a phased approach, get some real hard numbers on what this looks like, and a realistic timeframe for implementing it. I talked to Monty, he said eight to 10 weeks to actually get the physical system and then install it. So we could potentially capitalize on this, this coming season. Anyway, those are my initial thoughts here.
As a point of information for the community, City Hall received more than 300 emails against paid parking of any kind, and not one was in favor of it. Is that correct?
I've got a bunch of sound positions. I want to begin to hear them.
Okay. Well, that's what we have, that's what we, I'm just reporting, that's what we have at this time. We have 700...
I think if you ask anyone, no one wants to pay for parking. But at some point, that's not an option anymore.
And it wasn't the money, if you just allow me to finish. And this is my sentiment as well, is that when you start, and I understand, you know, that the city has a parking problem, and we will have to deal with it. But that being said, once you start down this path toward paid parking, and other people cited this in their emails, but I agree, you tend to lose the sense of community that we have. Paid parking, remember, nobody, no, no place becomes a different place overnight. It's baby steps. It's many, 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 many little steps towards something, a sort of place you really don't want to be. We are the place we want to be right now. In fact, we're the place too many people want to be. That's why we have a parking problem. So let's be careful in solving the parking problem, not to make it a place that we don't even want to be.
So coming back to the phased, I just think about why did the shuttle fail in the first place? And the reason why I think the shuttle failed, there was two reasons. One was that it was too far away, so there wasn't a frequent enough shuttle that you could park your car and know that within 10 minutes you're going to be, you know, at your job. And so, the problem with just doing Ocean Drive, and you have to take away the ability to game the system. The second reason why it failed was because you could game the system. So if you got there early enough, you could just park in the all-day parking at the south end of Humiston Park. Or you could, what a lot of people did was just go out and wipe the chalk off or move their car to a different spot. And so they were circumventing the three-hour time limit, which we were trying to do, and no one was willing to use the shuttles. So if we, if we put paid parking down Ocean Drive, but you don't have to pay on Cardinal, and you, and then what's going to happen?
No, Cardinal.
Everyone's going to park on Cardinal, and then you're going to have, and no one, no one is going to use this shuttle that you're going to put out there until you're enforcing this on Cardinal as well. So I think, I personally don't think it's going to work if you don't do the entire zone. Now, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it or not do it. I mean, I have my opinion, but, but I don't think that doing just Ocean is going to work for the reasons that the shuttle failed last time. The other thing is that, and nothing against, I read, I skimmed through all those emails, and a lot of them, like, almost like a third of them, were from people who live in Driftwood. And I, nothing against, but I don't know that they know that there's going to be, also be an option. So these are people who are living there. They may, they could potentially park in one of these areas where you have, in, up at the JC Beach and take the shuttle down. I'm not sure that they understand that that's going to be available to them, where they don't have to pay for parking all the time right there on Ocean Drive. But that said...
And let me, let me throw this out there as well. Just get, I just want the Council's opinion, especially yours. Just get, I just want a council's opinion, especially yours. What do you think the possibility of doing a traffic, sort of a traffic pattern study would be? Do you think it would be beneficial to basically send some people out there to ask some questions, like, where are you going? Are you shopping? Are you going to the beach? How long do you plan to stay here? I mean, just all sorts of statistical information to understand the patterns, including possibly the employees at the hotels, just to nail down some usage information, why it's being used and how.
I'm not opposed to something like that, as long as we're doing something to alleviate the parking issue in the short term. But, I mean, you got enough business owners in here that stare out their window every single day, they can tell you what parking patterns are. Yeah, I mean, it's, we know exactly what's going on, who's doing what, what the times are, when pressure's relieved on parking spaces. We got a lot of knowledge about, you know, what's actually happening day-to-day on the beach as it is. So, and to your point, Val, I hear ya. I've wrestled with the same thing. You know, how do you incentivize people to ride this shuttle if there's free parking in other places? Well, you know, I mean, we have two options. We can either do paid parking, we could do a system like what Stewart has, which is essentially a parking district. Let's say it's from Gayfeather to Beachland, Ocean Drive, and Cardinal, and put a time limit. So you can park there for three hours, and after three hours is up, you can't park anywhere in that district, or else you're automatically gonna get a ticket. That's how Stewart runs their system.
That's essentially what this is, but instead of, you know, just saying there's a $3 limit, you're paying for it, which is essentially the same thing, but probably better, because you have a revenue stream to pay for the enforcement. And that's, you know, one of the other things, I mean, we have our, our Vero Beach Police Department's out there, an employee, city employees out there doing enforcement for this area. I don't know how many employees we have doing that, but you're actually saving one employee in the process here. But anyway, I think it works. Do you believe that there's a parking problem? I think everyone believes there's a parking problem. Do you want to do something to fix it? Of all the things we've tried, the combination of parking and a shuttle is the only thing that sounds like it's going to work. And, but I really feel strongly that it's not gonna work if it's not the whole area. You're just gonna shift it from one spot to another, and they're just gonna find the ways to evade it. And then it's gonna look to the public like, well, yet again, they didn't solve the problem, and I want to fix it. I don't, I think that you have to commit if you're gonna do it, and you can't, it has to be in a way that you were committed to do this for a long period of time, whatever this contract is. We can't go into this contract and then six months later not have the spine to actually just stick with it and make this thing work and solve the problem for our community. I think it's time that we need to, and even if it's not popular, okay, I don't care how many emails were sent in, it doesn't bother me. I just, I want to do, I want to do what is the right thing. I do. I want to do what is the right thing for the community, and even if, even if some people say that they're against it and they're opposed to it, I'm gonna sleep well at night knowing that I did what I thought was the right thing for the community.
From this side of Ocean Drive.
For the.
There'll be public comment in a minute, and you can yell at me as much as you like. I'm ready.
So, you know, I'm not disagreeing that, you know, maybe it's an all-or-nothing thing. I'm just simply saying it takes time to put the system in any way. I don't know how much it hurts to phase it in. It could be eight weeks later that you do Cardinal Drive as well.
The other option you have, that the vendors pointed out to us, is you can have different prices in different sections of your parking district. Depending on what's premier parking and what's not, so maybe it's not a dollar an hour on Cardinal. And yet, so that, yet there's still a price, but maybe the price is not the same as it is to be right on Ocean Drive. So many options there. Again, that system is your management tool for incentivizing certain types of behavior, and I would have to agree with Karen Deagle's assessment at the last meeting, that that's the reason your shuttle didn't work. I mean, that makes sense, yeah.
I don't want to speak for city manager, but he's, I recall him saying before that he thinks that you either do all or nothing, or else it's not gonna work. That's it. That was your right, he expressed at the last meeting, I believe.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's open up to public comment.
Yeah, let's do it.
What's it say again? You want me to hold it?
No, 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 go ahead. You're here.
Yeah, no, just, you know, before the public comment, what strikes me is, is right now, there's not a consensus, to my understanding, of the businesses on the Barrier Island, that this is going to address the issue that they have. And the issue that they have is one of business. So is this going to provide the business by this solution? And, you know, maybe I'll learn this evening that this is, this is going to fix that problem. But I think it will fix, it will potentially help some of the businesses, and then it'll have the reverse effect on other businesses. And it may well end up driving away people from going to Central Beach because they don't want to put up with it. So again, this is a, this is an option that we need to explore, okay? And I think that's what we're doing here this evening. And, you know, and hopefully, before we execute this plan, we have a better understanding.
Let me just say this. I don't see Stewart, or Palm Beach, or some of the other ones mentioned.
Fernandina.
Fernandina, St. Augustine, I don't see them hurting because of it.
I think we do have to keep in mind, though, the entire city, because I know we're beginning to have a problem on 14th Avenue with parking, so we need to keep them in mind as well. But also, in terms of competition, I think you have to have a level playing field, and we have to be careful not to tilt it in anybody's favor. Whatever you're going to do, when we discuss it this evening, should be uniform, but not even to a certain district, but probably for the entire city, because otherwise, you're running the risk or the potential of having people who would've gone, say, for example, to a restaurant on the beachside, will go to 14th Avenue, which is, as I said earlier, a very cool place. I was just commending 14th Avenue earlier. For those who've joined us late, was it cool and something else? I don't know. It's very cool.
All right. Well, we're all done here, then we can open it up to public comment.
Hello, my name is Mary Sue Walker, and my husband and I own Cravings and Beach Twill on Ocean Drive. We have been there for over three decades, since 1984. We do employ many people, and this letter I'm about to read to you is not just my opinion. It's based on hundreds of customers. Their thoughts, employees' thoughts, employees from all of Ocean Drive at the hotels. It's from people who have sent in 183 shares, which turned into 15,000 views in two and a half days from one post on our Facebook page. So when I'm speaking, I'm not speaking for myself. I'm speaking for the community. We feel it prudent, my husband and I, and the employees, and our customers, to present our opinion and make a strong case against parking meters anywhere on the beachside. We have lived here for over three decades. We have seen recessions and booms. If we indeed have a seasonal parking issue, which we do during February through the end of April, a couple weeks in December, when it's like a little mini spring break. But before that, and during the summer, there are parking spaces everywhere. Ironically, we should consider ourselves very lucky to have such problem, no matter how inconvenient it may seem at times. We are a growing community, the Chamber of Commerce, and all business people who go to work every day and work extremely hard have made this community what it is. And that's why people want to live here, from all over the world they come. If the argument for parking meters is to deter parking, then that is a flawed goal. We should not seek to deter patrons nor prevent any persons from enjoying a day at the beach, whether it be shopping, eating, going to our beautiful parks, or the beaches. The public has spent an enormous amount of money fixing up our parks, because the city doesn't apparently have any money to do it. And now we're going to make parents get out of their car and pay to go use the parks. That's pitiful. No one owns the beach, and a municipality's duty is to answer the needs of its residents, not a few business owners who are crying because their patrons don't want to walk a block. It doesn't happen year-round. It's a short-term problem, which can be fixed, which I will address at the end. If our customers and employees were forced to pay for parking, we already know that a business such as ours, and many more, not just ours, will lose patrons and employees. They cannot pay for parking. These people live paycheck to paycheck. They don't have credit cards or debit cards to feed a parking kiosk. They live paycheck to paycheck. Their bills are paid in cash. The very idea of paid parking implies that parking preferences should go to those who can most afford it. A very offensive ideology, to say the least. And if the point of metering is to raise city revenue, then it is a regressive tax. Another point to consider is the age demographic of many of Ocean Drive's patrons. Our elderly customers, from the feedback we have received, do not want the burden of learning the new digital, often needlessly complex, metering system with a kiosk. A common argument we have heard repeated is that our parking problem is due to the workers unfairly taking up spaces, and that they should park elsewhere or receive rides. This should go without saying. But all residents, employees, and tourists are equally entitled to parking. I, my husband, enforce parking with our employees. They're not allowed to park on Ocean Drive, Cardinal, or the side streets. They are not allowed to leave our building to go move their vehicle. There are baby steps that we can take as business owners and the city council to encourage the largest employers to enforce this. You don't take a big swing and make a big mistake and ruin this community. A common argument, excuse me, we should not demean those that tirelessly serve changing beds, washing toilets, serving food, and washing dishes to people who enjoy coming here, to pay, the people who put money in all of our pockets.
If you could summarize your thoughts, please. Your time's up.
Businesses, as they do everywhere, often encourage their employees to park in designated areas as to leave preferred parking for patrons. This is a problem that can get fixed. It's a simple math problem. Our town is growing. We want it to grow. And while in season, we do have a shortage of convenient parking. There's nothing we can do about that immediately. There are steps we can take to change it. We can take certain steps and do that. Stewart has done that. It has worked. I've heard from many people that go there. So with that said, we do need a parking garage. You've heard it many times. You have the property.
Thank you, ma'am.
Build it. People will use it.
Thank you for your thoughts.
Yes.
Guys, I'm gonna remind you, we are sticking, we still have a long way to go tonight, so we're sticking with a five-minute rule.
Sharon Gory, 2075 37th Avenue, Vero Beach. That's in the city. I think I may have more questions than solutions or suggestions. First of all, I want to know, all the parking spots along Cardinal and Ocean Drive and 14th Avenue, and the, what used to be a public parking area behind the area where Sean Ryan is? Those are all owned by the city, is that correct?
I believe the parking behind Sean Ryan's is leased from, a leased lot?
All of those are public, except behind Sean Ryan's, about a third of that parking lot is public. The northern two-thirds, don't hold me exactly to that.
Because they're privately owned? Because they're leased from the city?
Privately owned.
Because the.
It used to be an entire public parking lot. So are the ones that have company names on them, were they bought from the city?
I can't answer that.
Were they leased from the city?
I've been with the city almost 30 years, and they've been public, or private parking spaces since I've been here.
Okay. So, okay. Now, we also have parking along the railroad tracks that face east. Those are not owned by the city. Those are owned by the FEC, and the city leases from the FEC? Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay. So I'm assuming you're really talking about a parking issue primarily on the beach. But I know people perceive that we have one in town as well. But we have a big parking garage in town by the courthouse that could be utilized. Am I correct on that?
Absolutely.
So we essentially don't have a parking issue in town. We just need to get people to utilize what's there.
Correct.
Okay. Pardon?
The parking issue downtown is back towards, oh my gosh, what's the Grape and Vine? That area there during timeframes?
I know, isn't it wonderful that it's so many cars there now? Remember when there was nothing in the evening?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so my question is, if we own, we, the residents of the city of Vero Beach, own all the parking spots along Sexton Plaza and Ocean Drive, which is where we say we have a major parking problem, and that the proprietors wish to have people pay to park, especially their customers, in front of their, why can't we lease those spaces in front of those stores to them and let them put their names on those parking spots to be towed? It's revenue to us. We don't have to buy kiosks. They get what they want. It's parking available at night when their stores are closed.
I'm not entirely sure that that's a possibility, but.
Well, but I think it's something that can be looked at.
Correct.
And so, that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Mrs. Gory. Point of clarification, Monty, have we talked about putting these kiosks, and I know it was just mentioned a few minutes ago, in parks? This is the first I've heard of that.
We've talked about, if we're gonna do paid parking on the, in the Beach Business District, to put it on all the parking spaces in that district. And that's what you see on the map in front of you. It goes from Gayfeather up to. But not, not JC Beach, and not. Not outside the district. Not outside the district. The Con Beach, JC Beach, and South Beach would be our free parking public beaches. Okay. And just for clarification, for people who are working, like, working people who are living paycheck to paycheck, that was the whole reason why we weren't even gonna consider this without some location. There's about 250, we talked about this last meeting, about 250 spaces between JC, JC Overflow, and along the boardwalk that goes south there. Those would all be all-day free parking areas with shuttle running. It's about a five-minute ride from there to the south end of Ocean Drive, so it would take a 10-ish minute round trip if we use those lots. So, or if, or if customers didn't want to pay for parking, they could always have the option of parking in that area and then taking the shuttle that was running about every 10 minutes. And then they could free parking. And we also, one other thing about the costs associated with this, there were several people at the last meeting who offered to validate parking. So if you want, if someone comes in and buys something in your store, and you want to give them a $2 parking rebate, and they know that, your customers are gonna go in there, and they're gonna, they're gonna know they're gonna get $2 off their, what they were shopping for, and that sort of offsets the cost for that. So I think there are, I just wanted to add those things in, because they were discussed last time.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Lois Bowman. I live at 3935 Silver Palm Drive. I've been a resident of Vero Beach for four years. I purchased property 20 years ago in hopes to retire here. Dream came true. When I came four years ago, I purchased a second property. With that being said, I like the beach. I lived in Delray Beach for 22 years, and trust me, it is not a small beach town anymore. With that being said, let's look at the things that are common here. I do not own a business. Both businesses, the hotels and the merchants, need each other. People in the hotel like the shops. The shop owners like the people in the hotel. You have more in common than you think you do. The shuttle idea, I don't believe was a bad idea. I played tennis. I played tennis at the racket club, and I saw that bus come, and I saw it wait, and nobody got on it. I didn't realize it ran for 18 months. I didn't realize the cost. I think it's a good idea, but it's a half-baked idea. There's no accountability to the businesses. Now, y'all know the game. Come out, I see it. And I walk, I'm fortunate enough, I can walk into town. Occasionally, I park. But I don't want the meters there. So really, this whole thing doesn't have an impact on me, but it has my, an impact on my idea of what I thought Vero is and should be, and should remain. With that being said, when you put that shuttle bus in effect, it should have became part of the businesses' job condition of the employees to park out there. I worked for the City of Fort Lauderdale Fire Department for 25 years. I was a division chief of operations, and there were certain things that were job requirements for me to do. And if parking over on the beach is what it takes to free up the streets without all this other investment, I don't know why you're trying to fix it's, your burden came when you allowed the size of the hotels to go in. Because when I came 20 years ago, they were mom-and-pop places, and they did clean 12 rooms on the same square footage, and they were in and out in the rooms rented again. I, I like the hotels. I use everything that's there. Trust me, I'm not, but in the future, you have to watch what you allow. And I listened today about that Dodger Town, and you were talking about parking. How much do you need? 500. Where's the overflow going? In the green space. Did you ever ask, how many people is it going to take to run and where are they going to park? No. No. You gotta look at the big picture. Build it and they will come? They will. They will. But you can't handle it. And I'm not saying change is going to happen. And we can either go along with it or not, but it's still going to happen. But watch how we change with the times. So, I always told my employees, come to me with issues before they come a problem. And with that, bring me a solution. I still have veto power, just like you do here. With that being said, I looked today and I rode around. We have the property by the southeast corner of the 60 Bridge, adjacent from Fire Station Two. You've got a green space there with pavilions and a restroom that never, ever gets used. You have parking that I do not suggest you take away from the people that walk and use the bridge, where they park, and they use the bridge and the walkway you put in. But that green space, you can make it a parking lot, and you can make it an employee parking lot. Which, if you're going to buy any kind of kiosk, it's an armband that the businesses register their employees in. They swipe a badge, the arm goes up, the employee parks, the bus comes by. You have the bridge to give them shade from the sun. You have the bridge that gives them inclement weather, someplace to be while the bus comes around. As far as employees, another 20 minutes to go to work. Average American, 45 minutes to an hour and a half, one way and back again. Sorry about the 20-minute delay. Muster up. Emergencies, if it's that bad an emergency, one manager covers for another, and you take your employee to the parking lot and get them to their car. So let's put the responsibility where it needs to be. You allowed these businesses come in, and you didn't check out what the real financial cost was going to be. They need parking, and you've got to make it a job condition of parking, and that bus will fill up. You may have to run two buses.
Thank you, Mrs. Gory.
And you can lease that property back after you make it in to get your revenue back.
Thank you, Mrs. Gory.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I think she's referencing the kind of smaller government I was talking about before. Well, I'm still James Carr, and I'm still a resident of the city of Vero Beach. I don't live beachside, but I keep thinking about the cities, the small cities throughout Europe, that might have a solution that might help your problem. Many of them have closed their city centers to traffic. And Americans go over there and they walk around in there and they think it's wonderful. Now, they, they don't like to give up their cars, so they don't like it here. So it would be a big adjustment. You'd have to park your car somewhere else and then take an Uber or a bus or a shuttle to get around in this downtown area where the, in the shopping district. And to keep people from parking in the neighborhood, you have, you know, all the people that actually live there have passes so they can park on their own streets, and the, the people who want to come and shop can't park there. Or at least they're going to get towed if they do. But the shopping district is automobile-free, except for liveried, delivered, and public transportation vehicles. Might work, worth considering anyway. Have you ever been to a small European city, and you get to the downtown area, and it's, it's lovely, you walk around?
They're really nice, but if you're elderly and you can't walk, and these are like, they go several city blocks long of businesses, and they're like, outdoor seating, and it's very nice, but, but it's not, it's not going to work here.
So you make scooters available.
Scooters, okay. It's not a bad idea.
Thank you, Mr. Carr.
There's lots of possibilities. Don't, don't go for that smaller government. Go for a little bit bigger government somehow.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, and the Council for allowing us to speak. I've been involved with the parking issue for quite a while. I'm Caesar Mistrada. I'm co-owner of James Stringer Gallery at 3465 Ocean Drive. I'm also a resident of Indian River Shores. I live off A1A in Baytree, and I love Vero Beach. I don't like the idea of parking meters. However, we have to address and get something done. But if you don't handle the employees, and that lady was perfectly right, not you, but the prior council made a very big mistake. I don't understand how a business like a hotel of the size we have gets a CO without proving that they have parking for their employees. And I think it's the responsibility of this council to correct that mistake. And I do think that there has to be some type of ordinance or some type of agreement with these large hotels and large restaurants that don't have parking for their employees to find a place for them to park. And maybe if we do that, we don't need the parking meters. But if we don't do that, we do. I hate to say it because I don't like the idea of it, but we have to do something. Someone said, I think Mary Lou, who I love, said, there's parking available off-season. I have to tell you, September 30th is the slowest time of the year. There was not one spot in front of my gallery or the whole block. Cooper is, Lee Jewel is, M Maison, not one spot. Why? They were all employees that come out every two hours. By the way, are we going back to three hours that we were promised we were? If there was no solution?
Back to two.
I mean, are we going back to two hours?
Yes.
Even that is not enough. The employees come out, two at a time, I see it all the time, and they just switch cars. That should not be allowed. And the employees have the right to park. I understand that. But it's up to their employers to find parking, and it's up to the council to force those employers to do that. Now, if we do meters, there could be ways, first of all, if you have it too low, they're just continue using the park, they're going to put coins in at a dollar an hour, and they're going to stay there for eight hours. You're making the problem worse. It goes from two hours to now eight hours. There are businesses that will be hurt by this, and I understand that. Maybe the first hour should be free, if you do parking meters. Because some people go for a cup of coffee, go to pick up a dress, go to pick up a painting, whatever it is. They're only going to be there 15 minutes. They're going to resent that they have to park and pay for an hour. So maybe the first hour, or half an hour, should be free. And according to what Monty was saying, those options are possible with these kiosses. So I think that there has to be many different solutions. One alone, parking meters alone, is not going to solve the problem. It may even make it worse, and it may distract people from parking. The Stewart thing is a terrible idea. To limit people to be in Ocean, in downtown for three hours a day, you're distrac, you're discouraging people from staying there and spending money. That is a ridiculous idea, in my opinion. People want to be in downtown, but they need a place to park. I hear it all the time. You know, we want to take care of everywhere. We want to take care of the beachgoers. We want to take care of the, but, you know, we have to take care of residents first. People that live in Vero Beach have the right to park first. Not the tourists. Love tourists. But we have to take care of our residents and our businesses who are residents. And that's basically what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's Natalie Castillo. I think the Cravings lady did an excellent job from a business standpoint as to what I feel the biggest issue is for parking. I am a City of Vero Beach resident. I do own a business here. So I'll just speak from my personal experience, like the lady who moved from Delray. I moved here from a little town called Lantana, which is close to Delray, 20 years ago. And when we were a young family looking to move, we had three choices: Stewart, Palm Bay, or here, because my husband's employer was relocating him.
Good choice.
We came to Vero. I couldn't believe there wasn't meters on the beach. I couldn't believe how nice people were. I remember when the gas stations out on State Road 60 used to still wash your window for you. So when I hear you guys speak about, well, Delray, it works for Delray, and Stewart does this, and Fernando Beach does that, the problem is, is that many of us that came here, the things we loved about Vero, like Laura Moss says, they're slowly, baby step by baby step, not Vero anymore. And unfortunately, I've raised four children here. I own a business here. I own two homes here. And we, as a family, have seriously considered selling everything and leaving because Vero is no longer Vero. And when I heard about parking meters, I don't want to live in Delray. I don't want to live in Lantana. I don't want to live in Stewart. I came to Vero because this town is unique and amazing. And you just don't understand. I grew up, I grew up as a kid, 40 years ago, I lived in Lantana. My family grew up there. My grandpa, you could see the beach from Congress Avenue. It wasn't even Congress Avenue back then. And I can't even remember a time there wasn't parking meters at the beach. And just from a personal perspective, like she's, like some people said, it's not about the money. I can afford to pay for a parking spot, but young families, it is a big deal. For me, it's an inconvenience factor of if I shop, if I want to eat at Cravings and then I want to go shop at Beach Shop, now I'm always clock-watching. And it ruins my casual, enjoyable Saturday afternoon, and that's what makes Vero unique. I can tell you, growing up, my best friend's mom was a housekeeper at the Hilton when they built it in Lantana in the 90s, I think it was the 90s, or late 80s. And that hotel had to provide their own shuttle for their employees, and it had to be away from the beach. So there are options to handle the employee issue, because it is an issue. If I was a business owner on the beach, I wouldn't want employees parking in my customer spots. But I think there's another way to find a solution to your employee issue. I think she raised some great points. These businesses should be requiring their employees to park off space. Another issue is, I don't know if it's true, I've heard people rumble that you only have one parking. You drive around every day, all day long, giving parking tickets to people that make $8 an hour, $10 an hour, they're going to use that shuttle. Because they can't afford a 57, I don't know what you guys charge for parking tickets. I've never got one here, but...
$20.
Oh, well, maybe you need to make it like a hard on the, on the pocketbook. Because when you're making $10 an hour, a $50 ticket is a huge deal. So that's all I have to say. I just don't want to see Vero become Stewart, Delray. Many of us, we came here for the vibe and the atmosphere that this town provides, and keep changing it baby step by baby step, and you're no longer going to have it, and the people that you love with that same attitude are going to find peace of heaven somewhere else. Thank you.
Can I just ask one question? Oh, sorry.
I was going to say, just as a point of information for council, I happened to meet one of the city council peoples, I think they call them commissioners there, but city council person from Stewart. And I, I didn't realize this. Thank you so much for mentioning Stewart, because it reminded me. What he said was that their population size is the same as ours. It's about 16,000. I haven't checked him on this, but this is what he told me, assuming he knows. It's about six, a little over 16,000. However, they are half the geographical size that we are. The city of Vero Beach is 13 square miles, and Stewart is half of that. So their density is twice our density, which I didn't know until he told me that. That just is a point of information. Thank you.
I just had a question for our attorney. A couple of speakers ago mentioned that, thankfully mentioned that it was not the city council that approved these hotels and all those things. But along those lines, the suggestion has been made that we could go back, or we could somehow try and go back after a hotel has their CO and force them into some kind of new parking requirement for their employees, or, or force their employees to use a shuttle. And my question is, is that something that is permissible, or is that not allowed?
No, once, once they had their site plan approved, and they've constructed their property, that you can't backtrack and change the rules after they've been approved. Because remember, when site plans are approved, it's, if they meet the code, they're permitted to, to go forward, and you can't change the rules after the fact. I think what we're talking about as far as employers is, it would have to be strictly voluntary on their part to enforce their own rules with their employees. They have a contractual relationship with their employees, that they could make that part of their, as someone said, make it part of their, their arrangement for employment.
And just, we, we have discussed this previously at previous city council meetings, and the response that we got from some of those large employers, I believe, was that the minute you, if you tell them that they have to park somewhere else, the minute they park, they're actually on the clock. Okay, so they're paying, they're, they're actually having to pay those persons for the 20 minutes that they're waiting. It's not, and there may be some liability issues, because once they've done that, then the employer is, that's their workplace, actually, and there's some liability issues. So I, I think that there may, it may be a little bit more complexity, but the, the bottom line is, we're really not allowed to, to do it. So it's not, and we're stuck in this situation. We're trying to solve this problem, and we have to deal within the realm. We didn't necessarily create the problem, but there's people asking us to try and fix it, and we have to, the only available possibilities, we have to explore those. We can't explore things that are not allowed.
Which is another reason we need to get rid of shared parking agreements.
I, I agree, and you said that we should, we need to get rid of shared parking agreements, we need to change our policy going forward so that the next development comes along, we don't have this issue, and that should happen too. But that's not the issue tonight.
Do you want to put it on the next agenda, though? You want to put it on for...
I don't want to even talk about the next agenda just yet. What was that?
But we should talk about it, yes.
On the next agenda.
Good evening, everybody. By the way, for those who don't know, today's Laura Moss's birthday. Happy birthday, Laura.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, dear Laura. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you so much, Jay Bird.
She's 25 today.
Thank you so much. Yes, please, thank you.
Okay, now you can start my clock. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Lee Olson, manager of Waldorf's Restaurant, and also board member for the Driftwood Properties. I'm a little shocked by your comment about not caring about the emails. Let me, let me finish. That's exactly why.
It doesn't bother me that a lot of people are going to say that, but I'm still going to just do what I think is best. That's what I meant by that.
Here's what the general public may not...
Here's what the general public may not know. Last year, we paid $226,000 in property tax to the City of Vero Beach. That is on the backs of, we don't have renters, so to speak, in our property. Our people are called owners, because that's what they are. They're owners. They own, whether it's one week, or like I said at the last meeting, we have one owner that owns 20 weeks. That's an investment in Vero Beach. A lot of these owners have owned for over 30 years. Actually, we have some members, some owners who bought originally when it went timeshare. So these are long-term people who care about our town, care about what goes on. But I just wanted to clarify that you may have gotten 125 emails from people from the Driftwood, those are taxpayers. They're not people at the Driftwood, they're taxpayers, they're invested in this town. Thanks. All right, getting to the meters, we think it's a bad idea, obviously, for many reasons. I fought this five years ago, did a petition drive myself, there's some petitions over there, there's 300 and some odd emails. It's not the town that we live in. You're, it's setting a precedent, I know there's a parking issue. I'm not opposed to the shuttle system. And we were kind of one of the only people, we didn't insist that our employees did it, because you cannot by law, I've already talked to legal, I can't force an employee to ride a shuttle into work. If I do, the liability starts. If there's a crash, guess what, they're suing the city, and they're suing us, because they're on the clock. So it becomes a worker's comp. It's not going to create any more parking spaces. The shuttle, the $200,000, was a bubble. She said that was from Monday through Saturday. In order to do the shuttle correctly, it would have to run from 6:00 AM to midnight. Not six days a week, seven. We're open on Sunday. Mary Sue is open. All the restaurants, the hotels, we work on Sunday. Y'all are watching football, we're at work, working on a Sunday. What are we going to do with a Sunday? What's the solution there? That shuttle's going to have to run seven days a week, 18 hours a day, to be effective. So that magical $200,000 is just that, magical. If you want us to encourage our employees, it's got to be acceptable to the hours in which they work. I have bartenders that get off at 2:00 in the morning. What do we do with them? Do we leave them in the dust? Or do we allow them to continue to use the parking lot over at the Hummiston Lot, or in front of Hummiston? So when they get out of work at 1:00 in the morning, they're not walking a mile with money in their pockets. Who wants to take on that liability? Not me. You know, you have, you have to consider everything. Don't look at just one side of Ocean Drive, there's two sides. And if I remember correctly, and I'll wrap it up, city limits is from 43rd Ave to the high tide mark, correct? So why are we narrowing in on just the beach side? You will create an unfair practice of us doing business.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
Okay, because if I got to pay for meter parking, I'm going to go downtown. Simple as that. It's either all or nothing, guys.
Good evening, my name is John Geese. My wife Jamie and I are Vero Beach residents of about six years. Jamie manages Patchington on Ocean Drive, and I represent Moss and Hoffman, which is on the corner of Beachland and Ocean Drive. First, I have more questions than answers, frankly, and I really have trouble connecting the effort with the shuttle. I don't know how that ever, it seems so unnatural to require an employee to take a shuttle, and we've seen that once, and it failed. But I will say this, being a relatively short in Vero Beach, the mosaic that Ocean Drive presents is very, very special. To think that there's some 35 or 40 essentially locally-owned businesses, boutiques, restaurants, whatever, is unique, and I think that represents one of the values of Vero Beach that we've been hearing about, the jewels of Vero Beach. So my hope is that, A, appreciation for your taking it on, and being somewhat committed to some form of action, and B, I just believe that it's really vital that we do something. The current trend is not our friend. So I appreciate your efforts and look forward to working with you and being helpful in whatever way we can in helping to resolve this problem.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Megan Hoots, 1825 21st Avenue, City of Vero Beach. In addition, I am the manager of an Oceanside establishment, 2855 Ocean Drive. So I do have firsthand knowledge, where actually my office window faces Flamevine, but right now, there's plenty of parking. And Cardinal is often free. I kind of, I agree with, Ocean Drive and Cardinal do have very different experiences in parking, so there's that. But what I hope we don't neglect to address is how this is going to affect the families that want to access the beach, and we've touched on it a little bit, and I understand that JC and South Beach will still have free parking, but if all the families who are unable to pay for parking to enjoy an afternoon at the beach on a weekend, if they all start to go to JC and South Beach, then that also creates a problem, right? We already have congestion at South Beach, it's on a nice day, really hard to find parking in either parking lot. So now you're diverting families to the north and the south where there's free parking, and I think that will snowball and end up becoming problematic. And I hope that we are interested in making sure that everybody in the City of Vero Beach can afford to enjoy the jewel that is Vero Beach, which is our beaches and our recreation. And if we lose sight of that, it becomes really problematic. In addition, like I go down to Miami a lot, and I have the Parking App, and Wynwood, the entire Wynwood district uses an app-based system, and it's actually not easy to circumvent your app, you pretty much, I don't think it's Park, it might be Park Mobile, but it is much easier to use your app than actually go up to the kiosk, it's, because they want you to use the app. And, you know, I don't want to sound ageist, but I think a lot of people are going to have problems with just an app-based parking system. I do, like, I've had problems with it. One of the last times I was down there, and my phone wanted to update, and I had to, you know, it's not...
We're seeing people. How's it going?
Right. Right, but I would also just err on not assuming that an app-based system is going to work for everybody, because it's not. But anyway, I just hope we can consider families, and making sure everybody has access to recreation, because that is continually where this conversation ends up, no matter what issue we're being discussed, it's, let's all circle back and make sure that we all have equal access to the amenities of Vero Beach, and it shouldn't be the responsibility, these amenities shouldn't be leveraged in order to put more money into the pocket of the city, right? These amenities are a right for the people here, and it's why we're here, and we all should have access to it. And I just don't want to lose sight of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jay Miller from Grove Isle, and I want to add my two cents, because I have a couple stories that I want to tell, so you know. Councilman Young, 1962, May, March 11th, they had parking meters downtown, and whoever was on the councilman, I want, you probably know who was on the councilman, and the parking meters, and I was getting married, and the Lloyd's Men's Store there, you put two cents in the meter, one or nickel or dime, anybody remember putting that in there? So anyway, she got a $10 ticket for parking, picking up my clothes for the wedding. That's number one story. Number two story, I was president of Beach Business Bureau in 1960, and I had an early American store where the twig was, in fact, I had it where the party packs was, and the city council, there was a vacant lot where the twig shot was, they wouldn't let my dad build a restaurant there, the guy went over and put it where Lums was, where I worked at, on US1 Wayside Inn. So the reason he couldn't build that, there was no parking, there was parking place in the back, so that's two parking stories. So I'm not in favor of the parking, because I, when I was president, we tried to get people coming to Vero Beach, and they came, and now you've got old people, you've got the young people, I don't know how to work the telephone, and then have money in my pocket to put in the meter or so forth, and so you've got a different thing. So my only thing is, I Friday night, I went to the downtown, and I went all the way around, and I got a handicap park, and there, there was no parking, you know how it is? Same way with the Christmas parade, when you go there, they're parked all the way down to Rima. So my idea is, keep things the way they are, the early bird gets the worm, and if you want to park, you go.
Thank you, sir.
Now, one more, one more story, that's Mr. Jay Bar, Jay Bar's birthday, speaking of birthdays, his birthday is next week, October 10th, right?
Right.
Happy birthday, Jay Bar.
I'm only going to be, I was 10 from 100, I'm only going to be 9 from 100.
Good evening, council, Mark Frankenberger, I operate Corey's Pharmacy, I also manage the family's building, we have many tenants here, we flank Ocean Drive. Could we roll that down to look at Hummiston Park, Monty?
Straight. Is that it? No, that's, that's a, that's a, something.
First and foremost, the parking spaces on Ocean Drive that are to the immediate west of our building are actually owned by us, always have been. They are included in your diagram, however, my tenants have made it clear that they would like to opt out of any metering on our property, so that would have to be removed from the idea. I feel that a number of small businesses, including my own, would be affected by the casual shopper, the person picking up their prescription, the cup of coffee, and having to pay for even just running in quickly to a business could be very detrimental to quite a few of us. I don't think we have adequate enforcement. If we think about it, we know that we have one agent that drives around, he covers the beachside, he covers the mainland. It takes some two hours to make the route. He pays for himself, he uses an old chalk stick, you know, it works, but two hours. If you're strategically parking in front of one of these hotels, you could just miss them, and you could park there for almost four hours. So think about that. Now, what we haven't brought up, I mean, it's been brought up as a part of the kiosk, but the license plate recognition systems, which are available to put on in parking enforcement vehicle. It is besides GPS location, we set up zones, they simply drive through 15, 20 miles an hour, scanning every vehicle in that area, and they could make much better time doing that. I understand the city's looked into it in the past, and it was to have all the bells and whistles upwards of maybe $150,000, so we're looking at something less. But what we're looking at, I think, is a better option, that we could maybe create grids up and down Ocean Drive, and let's say, no solution's going to make everybody happy. But what if, for example, we said, north of Beachland, we make it three-hour parking per day, south of Beachland, we make it two-hour parking, you know, just to throw it out there. So as the vehicle goes by, reads the license plate, reads its area, that's the zone it's in, the clock starts tipping. He can probably make so much better time not having to stop and chalk every vehicle going probably 15, 20 miles an hour, he can scan every vehicle, make his route, and what if he can do it twice an hour? What if we had two agents doing it twice an hour? The revenue that we could potentially bring in, the enforcement level we could then have, might resolve this issue without expensive kiosks. Where do the hotel employees work, park? That's still an issue. We have an issue with the building to our east. It was accepted with no parking, and we look at between Citrus Grill, the Beauty Salon, Salt, we're looking at times of the day, mid-afternoon, when the employees come in, that they probably need upwards of 30 parking places for employees. Over 20 for the restaurant alone, and various times through the day, that'll change, sure. Where do they go? 30 employees, and there's Nino's Restaurants at nighttime when they're busy, 8, 10 employees. So we're talking 40 parking places in the 50-city lot across the street. I mean, yes, we need a parking garage there, but as I understand, there's no money for that. So where does that leave us? Can we raise, yes, sir, Harry?
I just, I just wanted to say, I don't disagree with that statement, and maybe is my answer.
If we can come up with money, that's great.
I'm being very vague right now, but maybe.
Yes, yes, if we can come up with that money, and I think that would satisfy so many people here, if we created those parking spaces, more central, easier for the employees, and a simple tweak to our enforcement strategy would then help to enforce the lazy ones, the ones running late, would also bring in probably more revenue. And this system, I understand it's pretty streamlined, and you could set up the zones however you wanted to up and down the strip, make two-hour, three-hour, but, or make it all the same thing, two hours or four hours per day maximum. But maybe zones are better, so if you'd like to shop one part of the district and move to the next, when you're logged there, you've got, your time clock starts over. But nobody's going to pay money, because I think that will encourage, so many people will be discouraged to go for that casual, let's just jump in and see what they have, let's just walk in real quick. I'll tell you how many customers I have that won't buy an item if they don't have a dollar off coupon. Think about parking in that example. Anyway.
Thank you, Mark.
Thoughts?
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
Late hour. Hope we all get home soon. Good night.
I just said, a thought after what he just said, a couple of potential solutions, even if you had a parking system for the casual shopper, or one is, we can look and see whether there's some like, first 15 or 30 minutes or whatever it is is free, that's one option, and the other option is, you can, if they're purchasing something in your store, you can validate a dollar towards their, towards their shopping, and I think most businesses are, who are, have them or casual, would probably willing to do that. But I'm not, I'm not saying that that is the solution, but those are potential ways to get around the casual shopper issue.
Absolutely, but still, there's the frustration for many people of simply having to deal with a kiosk.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
Believe me, with a business like mine, and the average age of my customer...
I, I hear you, I'm just, the problem that we run into is, we only can deal with the available solutions, and if we don't have a solution that addresses where do the workers park, where, I mean, and if you don't have the money to pay for a garage or these other things, then where do you get the money? And it may be that, I don't know, maybe you have, I don't know, but thank you for...
Of course.
And this is why this isn't easy, because even if we had the money to build a parking garage, you know, we get an extra 150 spaces, how do you encourage employees to park in it? You know, Bobby's Restaurant's still affected, because the hotel employees don't want to park in the parking garage in front of your place, you know, it's...
Sure, but still, if we're utilizing two, three-hour limits, that will knock out a lot of the employees, and we're just enforcing it. Right now, our... Right now, our enforcement's rather loose with as infrequently as our officer's able to get around. And so many business owners have told me tonight that they see people just rolling the tire, wiping the chalk mark off, or occasionally it gets missed. But with the systems available, missing a license plate becomes much more difficult. I just came across this trying to look into the kiosk systems myself this past week and stumbled across this, and I realized that there are quite a few cities using this.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Hi, I'm Rosemary Polsky Newman. I'm the president of the Vero Beach Art Club. And we have a problem that is totally different than anybody else's problem because we run art in the park, something like eight to 10 weekends out of the season. And we have about 20 or so artists who put up booths outside Humiston Park, and they park right in front of their booths. And they do this because they have to set up the booths, they have to bring in all the stuff for the booth, and they, they can't really unload and then move the car because they can't really leave their stuff there unattended. So for them, I mean, we think we're providing a service to, to Vero Beach because we're doing something that brings visitors in and makes it enjoyable for visitors. Of course, our artists like selling things also, so we're doing our service for ourselves as well. But, you know, we wouldn't, we would really want to be taken into account if you do go ahead with meters or whatever, you know, if you went through with the license plate thing, we'd like to get an exemption for our artists for the day each time we, we set up. You know, I mean, it's, it's, it would be impossible for our artists to deal with this if they have to move their cars. So, anyway, I, I don't know what your solution is, but I would very much appreciate, as would our 500 members, you to take us into account when you figure out how to deal with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, folks. My name's Bobby McCarthy from Bobby's Restaurant. Moved there in 1978 from a little town called New York City. So I've been paying for parking my whole life. But I lived in Fort Lauderdale, Lauderdale by the sea, back in early 70s, quiet little town, and got out of control. You can't get a parking space in Lauderdale by the sea, even with kiosk and all parking plans. Back then, Delray, Boynton Beach, they were there, small little, no reason to go to. Now they're thriving. Millennials have moved there, yuppies have moved there. They've got restaurants, affordable, affordable living. And I guess they've, they've, as they grew, they figured out a plan, parking issues down there. Kiosk, no parking lot, so like that. I was in Winter Park this weekend. Crowded little town, just like Vero Beach. Same characteristic, shopping restaurants, they have parking garages sort of tucked away. They make employees park at the college in the summertime, you know, from restaurants, basically. So obviously, things grow. This town has grown. I've been here a long time, watched Ocean Drive grow. And like I said in the past, we've got four of our biggest employees within a four-block radius, four major hotels, each with probably 100 to 125 employees. I don't know where they're parking. And I, the lady with the bus system, I, I agree with that. I don't know what the legality is, what the liability is, but if your employee there or one of my employees, I think we can utilize that shuttle system, okay? Like the fellow from the Ocean Grill, I mean, from Waldo said, some employees get off at 2:00 in the morning. So it is awkward. And I guess we've got to sit down and figure that schedule out. But I mean, I'm, I'm kind of for the parking kiosk. It's a couple dollars, dollar, $2 an hour. I mean, the clientele on the beach on this is going to, going to deter them from coming there. And maybe like Val said, you know, restrict like the first half hour freebie, where if you're just in and out, or validation, which they do in Palm Beach, you park off at Worth Avenue, they validate your tickets, free parking there if you buy, if you eat in the restaurant or you purchase something. So I think there's a couple of ways. I mean, you've got to look long-term, guys. Not today or tomorrow, you know, five, 10 years from now. It's not going to get any different. It's going to get busier. I mean, there's a lot of people against the parking right now, but you've got, I mean, I understand the last couple of years talking about this, as Nancy Cook has. And there's more and more people, and it's not quite a part-time town anymore. People here year-round. It drops off. I mean, I remember it was a sleepy hollow. 20 years ago, you could shoot a cannon up down Ocean Drive. There's people here now, it's busy. Even September, historically the quietest time of the year. I'm not complaining, we did a nice little business this year. It's, it's a whole different, different complexion now than what it was. And I, I'm kind of for the parking kiosk. I think it's, we've talked at length about this. I think it's the way to go. It's not, it's not $5 or $10 an hour. It's affordable, but you've got to look long-term. And like a validation program, or the first 15 minutes, a half hour, it's on a freebie. I don't know what system you want, want, you know, address, but I think, I think there's something out there that could work and be comfortable. I really do. And, because it's not going to get better. I think, I think, well, you got to do, I think, you can't just do on an Ocean Drive and have nothing on call, because you know they'll be parking over there. And if people want to go to the beach, so you go to the beach for three hours. And my course is $6. I mean, it's, it's, it's a problem that's here, and it's not going to get any better, as we, we've discussed in the past. You know, Harry, you've been here your whole life, basically, you know what it, what it's been. You know, you go up to Blowing Rock in the summertime, you know what the issues are up there. And, and they, they dressed it with a parking garage, and it's, I'd say it's 100% foolproof, but it's taking a lot of pressure off.
It did, it did help a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Aesthetically, it's pleasing. In fact, you don't even know it's there unless you know where to look.
Architecturally, landscape architecture, you can, but that's another issue. I mean, obviously, but I really think that there's answers. The shuttle system, it didn't, it failed the first time. I think now, if we, we, I guess, there's certain rules, like, the legal aspects, the liability, I don't know how that works, but I think there's got to be ways you get around. You talk about a lot of employees on the beach, and you can't be out there moving cars all day. I watch them, obviously. You know, it's, and then, and, and I watched the people in the hotel next to me, they pull right in front, run, pull in the store at 3:00 in the afternoon, and they're there for eight hours. That's the night shift. I mean, it's, it's, it's just a, it's a problem that's, that's not going to go away anytime soon. So I just, and I think, make value your idea about the, the validation and short-term parking, that might be a way to go if we do put kiosks in. I mean, but, you know, it's a, you've got to look down, long, down, down the line. I think it's, it's going to be a long-term problem. You've got to sort of nip it now and, and deal with it.
Thanks, Bobby.
Okay, folks, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Happy birthday. Mine was yesterday.
Hey, happy birthday.
I'd like to hand out these petitions to everyone. I walked up and down Ocean Drive. And I walked up and down Ocean Drive. And a lot of my lovely employees are all in that row. Up and down Ocean Drive.
Oh, hi, I'm Kathy Paget. I am Veranda.
Thank you.
Anyway, there's a letter from Jim Hocke. I would read out all those names, but I only have five minutes to talk. And it'll take probably 50 or 20 minutes. The kiosk system, as described tonight, the revenue from the kiosk system could be a huge factor in building a parking garage that hasn't been brought up. There's huge revenue in the kiosk system. There's many ways to implement it. People could be giving, given partial, you know, 15, 20 minutes or so free. But y'all are all talking about this parking garage that's so expensive, and you talked about the offset tonight. What did you say it could possibly offset?
I have no idea what the victim charges.
And the fact of the matter that we have a police officer, as I was shopping in Publix the other day, the code enforcement guy was in the Publix Shopping Center. What do you think of that? That's private property. He was handing out tickets potentially to the handicap spaces, and I stopped and asked him. I said, why are you here? And why aren't you on Ocean Drive giving out tickets? He said, oh, I can give tickets out here in handicap parking places. I said, so you're on, in Publix giving out tickets as opposed to being on Ocean Drive? He said, yeah.
Somebody probably called him.
That's not the point. We have one guy. How much does he get paid a year? Does anybody know the answer?
I used to know that answer.
Okay, 100 grand a year, and the kiosk system can operate itself, and it's sort of self-employed to mandate and pay for the tickets, am I right?
Well, I do think, if policing, I think policing the handicap spots is probably a pretty important thing, too.
No, no, I know. But my point is, but that's fine.
Application for parking people back here.
But the point of the matter is, it sounds like the kiosk can give us a lot of money. That could be a lot of money that could go to the parking garage, that this, this magical parking garage that we keep complaining about the potential cost. What did you say per unit the parking garage would cost?
$19,000 per space.
Okay. And how many spaces are we looking at?
150.
And didn't you say that, that potentially the kiosk could even pay for the bus that, the, the potential bus that could carpool people back and forth?
It's kind, it's kind of going to be one or the other.
No, no, I know, but the point of the matter is, zero from zero is zero. If you don't implement the kiosk, you still got to pay for the trolley. Where's that money going to come from? You still got to pay for the garage eventually. Where's that money going to come from?
I, I agree with you. That's why we've been talking about doing it.
The kiosk will make Ocean Drive open up to the brick and mortar people. I'm a brick and mortar owner. I can guarantee you that most of my girls, they're not there for a hobby. Most of the people, all the people that work, they're not, that's not a hobby for people. That's their livelihood. They support families. We need, we, we need support on, we need support from city council. We need to implement the kiosk to give us an opportunity and, you know, an even playing field. The hotels do not address their employees. Everybody knows that. This is not, you know, some new thing. I'm responsible. My girls have a plate, anybody that works for me, excuse me, I do have a man that works for me. I offer, my girls and my guy have a place to park. Every one of the stores on Ocean Drive provide parking, all the shop owners provide parking for their employees. The hotels don't. Charlie Replogal signed two pages in there. He's tired of people going underneath the Ocean Grill, trying to get in his parking place. You know, he, he has no business really being here. He's got a massive parking lot, but he feels the need for the kiosk, for the betterment of the city. I mean, we've got people that are just, you know, they come and stay and park all day. You know that, Lang, you've seen them. Everybody, and they come and they take their tires and they take off the chalk. We cannot survive. The kiosk will pay for themselves and give us good revenue. And I can't imagine that they won't work. They exist in many other cities, not because they don't work. They exist because, A, they do work, and they provide money, and there's all kinds of implementation that we can do to make everybody happy, I think. But look at all those signatures. Those are people that work up and down Ocean Drive, are shopkeepers, and also customers. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathy.
Hi, I'm Julie Knight. My husband and I have four businesses at 919 Azalea Lane, 921 Azalea Lane, 923 Azalea Lane, and 925 Azalea Lane. I came here tonight just to learn more about the kiosk system and obviously parking on the beach. My first thought is that I was astounded at the cost of the kiosk and horrified at a five-year commitment that would be required to be made. That's, that's saying that we're going to get into this and not be able to get out for five years if it doesn't work. And I don't think anyone here is convinced that it's a fix. I think it's an idea. I loved what Mark had to say and his idea. Drawing on that, I think the only thing that, that was a problem, you said where are the hotel employees going to park? And I think the one thing that we've gotten from all of this is that it really is the hotel employees that are creating the bottleneck of parking on Ocean Drive. The small business owners, our employees do not use that parking. We don't allow them to do it. Sometimes I have to come to work in the morning and go inside and tell my employee that she's got to back up and move over four inches because we've got to get 11 cars behind the stores so that we're not taking up customer parking. And that's not just for our customer parking, that's for everybody's customer parking. From listening to Kathy and Bobby and, and Melinda, it, it seems to be that the businesses that are across from the hotels, particularly Kimpton's, are really suffering the most. And when they say that their street has been full all summer long, I'm on Azalea, we have not been full. You heard somebody else say they were on Flamevine, they haven't been full. So that just goes back to saying that it really is the hotel employees. If you look at what Mark was talking about, I mean, I just looked at, I was just kind of playing with what you were saying, and we were looking at close to half a million dollars for the startup cost for a kiosk. And we're going on the fact that we have 750 spaces, and we're looking at what other towns are doing. And I don't, know Delray well, but are they as seasonal as we are? Because we're not going to have 750 spaces filled eight hours a day, 365 days out of the year. We also don't have any evening restaurant business per se in the same way that Delray or Fort Lauderdale have, where they have the outdoor eateries and the cafes and a lot going on at night. So we're not going to be generating revenue in those spaces in the evenings at the same rate that those places are. So we're looking at a lot for startup and maybe not as much in return as what we think we may have. End of the day, we're in it for five years, whether we're getting a return on it or not. So when you say, with what Mark was saying, we can have somebody over monitoring, actually giving tickets, up the rate of the ticket if that's what it costs. The hotel employees will not be coming out and moving their cars every hour. It won't be lucrative. Or they'll get a ticket, and it will cost more than what they make, and they'll decide to find other parking. Back to your comment, which was a great comment, well, where do they park? Well, John's Island runs a shuttle. They pick their employees up and they bring them over and they drop them off. So when the hotel gets tired enough of listening to their employees talk about how they can't afford to park, or when they get tired of their employees coming in and out of the, their job every two hours to move their cars, the hotels, in my opinion, will finally buck up and say, okay, let's get a van and shuttle our employees back and forth to work.
When's your, when's your budget?
We can't tell the employee, the hotels what to do, but we can certainly make it painful enough that they have to step up to the plate and do what's right. I mean, I don't like being parking monitor behind my building every morning, but I have to do it if everyone's going to get, get parking. So, I mean, I think that's a real, a good idea. The problem I have mostly with, with the kiosk is several things. Our consumer is older at times, and I know my mother-in-law will not download an app. She might be able to go to the kiosk and put her credit card in. That's if she's not scared her identity will be stolen from putting it in the kiosk. The third problem I have with the kiosk is that when it goes bad, I have the customer coming into my store and yelling at me. And I was just in Portland, and we were in Austin this summer, and both of them had it. And there were several times that I had to pay two and three times at a kiosk to get the paper to come out, to stick it on my windshield so that we didn't get towed. So it is not a foolproof system. We are a small town, we are known to be friendly. I really don't want to get chewed out every day because somebody didn't get their ticket from the kiosk or, and I'm not quite sure either how we're collecting the money for the tickets because...
If you could summarize, please.
Sorry, what?
Summarize, your, your time is up.
Oh, sorry. And I'm not sure how we're getting, do we still have to have the officer go around to collect the money if they've parked for longer? Because now we're really not getting rid of a police officer, we still have them coming around.
They were saying that the systems are turnkey systems where it's inside the, they actually do it, they enforce it themselves, they have their own employee. It's not a city employee.
Got it. But, and so they... Got it, but, and so they, give them a ticket?
They, they do.
And how do they collect the money from that person, just?
I don't know.
Okay. Well, that was just trying. But anyway, long and short of it is, I think that we can make the hotels, if we make it painful enough, they will do it. And at the end of the day, this entire night, it's the hotel employees that are taking up, that are causing the bottleneck.
Thank you. Thank you.
And just, just, I did look into all this and that is what Stuart is doing and that's what we were talking about before. And the way Stuart does it is they have shuttles, okay, which we already saw what it costs to run a shuttle. They, and they have, they do have some all-day parking lots, okay, where people can employ and then you can park in the all-day lots and then you can take the shuttle around. The problem is that if you don't have, and they're much less expensive, I had Chief Curry looked into it, I forgot the number he told me, but in my memory it was somewhere like between 70 and 80,000, this is a few months ago, for one of those reader systems to get it up and going and they can go around and, and do that. The issue is that you still have to have some all-day lot and you don't have any revenue stream to pay for the shuttles if you're not using, if you're not collecting some, getting, generating some revenue from the parking. It's not an easy solution, but...
Yeah, I think if we can get the employees to park...
Step up to the microphone if we're still having...
Then we don't have the, we don't have the bottleneck for the customers.
Thank you. Mr. Hetty.
Brian Hetty, I'm still resident. I think I'm going to move into City Hall, what the hell. The amount of time I spend here, I might as well have a bed. The city has no business being in the electrical business. I think every single one of these council members have told you that over and over again. I'm not wrong there, right? City has no business being in the electrical business, but apparently it's okay to be in the parking business. Right? Apparently it's okay for city council members to come up with, you know, I have a couple of different people from New York. I know that my business in New York, I provided parking spaces for my employees and I told them where they could and couldn't park. This is a problem, but we had money to do something about the parking issue. And I think it was in the 90s when the property owners, the business owners from the beach said that we don't have a parking problem and we want our parking impact fees back. So the money that we had is now sent back to them. So if we're going to need money to do this, maybe the first step ought to be to recapture the money that we sent back. Because I don't think that it's really an average taxpayer kind of problem that the average taxpayer needs to dig into their pockets to provide kiosks and parking meters and whatever because the businesses have a parking problem. If the businesses have a parking problem, then I'm sure the businesses can probably make another business, which is a parking business. But city has no business being in the electrical business? That's an essential service. A parking spot is not an essential service. Val said that, is it permissible, he had a question for the city attorney, is it permissible to change the rules that we had for the hotels that allowed their employees to park? And the city attorney says, "No, can't do that because once a decision is made, you're not allowed to change it once they've been approved." Which is really pretty interesting because we have an election coming up and here on September 11th, the day that the qualifying ended, we had six candidates, including me, Brian Hetty and Linda Hillman at the time, were kind of right here and approved. But we can't change things once they're approved, but apparently the city attorney can do that anytime he wants because on September 11th, it's all, by the way, those that were approved for election, nah, no more, we don't approve them, take them off the list. But they can remove a choice for you people, they can remove a choice of who you can or can't vote for. They have the authority to change that without even a council meeting, but they don't have the authority to go over and tell the hotel that, "By the way, you need to provide some spaces for your employees, don't have them parking out in front of our businesses." Really? They can't tell the hotel that? No. No, the city attorney says, "No," because once they've been approved, that's it, it's a done deal. So for you, Linda Hillman, once you've been approved, it's not a done deal anymore because we don't want your mouth up on the council. Because you'll say things that they don't want to hear. I say things I don't, they don't want to hear all the time. I'm saying things right now they don't want to hear. When I've been approved for five minutes, this is crazy. I have, and I can dig up the tapes from my television program, we've done this for 10 years, we've done this repeatedly, and we went through the city with my cameraman out the roof of my car and we taped all of the parking spaces. And not on any day or during any season was there ever a time where I couldn't find at least one parking spot, which is all I need. There was not one time in 10 years of doing this survey that I couldn't find a parking spot within a block of where I wanted to be.
Thank you, Mr. Hetty. Any more public comment?
My name is Richard Schab. My address is 3325 Fortnum Place. And first of all, thank you for your stamina this evening. It's been a long day for you, I'm sure. But a couple of thoughts about what I heard and what I like is that there is no silver bullet, like was mentioned in the last meeting. I like the idea of, you know, the shared riding. No one wants to pay for a parking meter, but that's not going to change. Parking on Ocean Drive is horrendous. It's bad, we all recognize that. The amount of rentable retail space on Ocean Drive is almost gone. It will move over to Cardinal. And so I think that whole rectangle needs to be resolved. For those businesses like Corey's Pharmacy and so forth, I think the idea of having that 15 or 20-minute free time to go running and get your prescription is a very good one. I think the shuttle is very good, but you're not going to get around the parking issue on Ocean Drive. It has to be done now. My greatest claim to fame is I'm Melinda Cooper's husband. Her shop is on Ocean Drive. My office is on Cardinal. But it's just not going to go away. It just has to be done. And I sincerely appreciate the sense of urgency with which you addressed this issue in the last meeting. But I think it is extremely urgent. I know it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schab. Any other public comments, Seating? Going once, going twice, closing public comment? Discussion from council? Or are we discussed out?
I think at 9:32 at night, we're pretty discussed. But anyway, the idea of additional enforcement from a fiscal risk point of view seems a hell of a lot more supportable than the major investment into the, in the kiosk system. I mean, and if you have available parking for the, for the employees, it seems like that addresses the primary concern, which is to provide additional available space for the businesses that are impacted on, on the boulevard.
What are your, what is the available parking under an increased enforcement system? Where is the available parking?
You could use the additional space available by JC.
But how are you going to get them back and forth?
Then they, what was...
With a shuttle?
No, no.
Okay.
What was recommended is to have the fact that you have the requirement to, basically the employees or, or the employees would be fined if they're excess of time. So then it becomes in the interest of the larger employers to provide a shuttle for their employees to go to the parking area. There you go. What's wrong? Job seat?
Well, no, no, I'm just, I get the, I get the concept, but my concern is that you're going to, it's going to be a disaster because you're going to do all this enforced parking before the hotels have caught on and you're going to have a whole bunch of employees who can't work and you're going to, and, or they're going to be, anyway.
Well, I mean, the flip side of the coin is, you invest, you know, half a million dollars and you find out that the people do not want it and so the city is stuck with paying a half a million dollars, which the majority of the people aren't bought into because there are folks on the, on the mainland who don't want to have to pay for, you know, a kiosk. I mean, there's, there's a, you know, there's, you know, there's a, you know, give and take.
You're definitely, I agree with you completely that you're definitely making a commitment if you go down this path, that you're going to stick with it for five years because you're not, otherwise, the alternative is, is that if you determine that you did not like it and it did not go well, the financial loss is so significant that you can't do that. So you are committing to something when you do this. I would just say, what, what has happened in other places, I don't like to reinvent the wheel. What has happened in other places than this? Have they, I'm sure they got, they get backlash everywhere you go after you do something like this. But talking to some of the people who've done this and gone through this and find out what their experience was and, and before we sign the dotted line on a contract, that's a pretty important step along the path. But I think that you have to have a little bit of fortitude in the face of some things that are not going to always be the most popular decision, but you know it's the right decision to try and solve the problem. That's my, that's how I view it. I don't think it's going to be popular if we do a parking system, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't do it if it's the right thing to do.
But what makes it the right thing to do, in your mind, may make it the wrong thing to do by a majority of the people in Vero Beach.
That's true. That may be true. I'm just, I can only vote how I, what I think is best. So, and I understand that there's going to be people who don't like that or, or are opposed to that or think I'm stupid or wrong, but all I can do is do what I think is the best solution. And that's all we can all do, is just...
I agree.
That's all, that's all any of us can do.
So a couple, a couple of suggestions. We're rolling into season, 1st of October. Whether or not anything happens with a kiosk system, it's going to take some time. So I would suggest, and I don't, can't remember what we said, the 31st or when that was, that we were switching back to two hours, but I'd suggest, let's go ahead and, and give some direction to go back to two hours. And then have a council discussion here about potentially increasing parking fines to something more substantive than 20 bucks as, as a short term. You know, we've got people that want us to take action now, so this is something we can do very easily. You know, I mean, there's, there's two sides of this. I have a lot of store owners that say, "My customers are tired of getting tickets." So there's no, there's no easy solution here, but perhaps we move it from, you know, 20 to 40 or 50, whatever, whatever that may be. But that's something we can do immediately. We can go back to two-hour parking and we can increase the parking fine. I'd like to get some more information anyway, it's not going to hurt, to understand what the real numbers look like on a kiosk system. But other than that, you know, that leaves us with two other options that are on the table right now, which is, you know, figure out a way to better enforce parking. And there, sound like there's some options. Or two, you know, figure out a way to pay for a shuttle service, which we have no guarantee anyone's going to use. Or three, figure out a way we're going to build a parking garage.
The, I mean, the whole premise for the kiosk system is to incentivize people to use the shuttle, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and provide additional revenues for the service. So, so, Monty, I mean, from, can we go back to, to the Chief Curry and find out what the incurred cost would be to double the, you know, the enforcement of parking on the barrier island and then increase the, the ticket cost? Because I mean, I think that would be an incentive for people to be less prone to just park and then shift to the next parking spot.
Yes, we can get some updated numbers from the chief. When you say double the enforcement, do you want to talk about the times you want the enforcement? And instead of saying double the enforcement, tell us what times you want to...
Right, no, I mean, they would have to come back and give us what they see to be optimized pattern. I mean, I think that's, that is a step, when we all want to make a step to address the issue. And I think that's the most easily executable step that can be done. And then the second part is what Lang mentioned in regards to looking at potentially increases the, the fine associated with parking.
So this may be a horrible idea, but you know, if, if we were to talk about enforcement, not creating, you can't park in this parking district for any more than three hours for the day. Let's just say, instead of chalking tires, we're doing the license plate reading, right? And essentially you're driving by at whatever the speed, even if it's 10 miles an hour. I don't know that, that that necessarily needs to be a police officer that does that. So, I mean, theoretically, we can mount something like that on a shuttle. And, you know, the shuttle that's driving people and offering to shuttle the free parking could be the same one that's reading tags.
Well, that would assume that it goes all around...
Well, and it could. I mean, why could it not?
Up and down every street?
Why not?
Because then you're taking 45 minutes to get from JC to wherever you're dropping...
Well, but you, you make runs, right? So let's just say hypothetically, it's the JC parking lot. You make runs, but you have two hours then to drive down the side streets in between.
I think, if you want to hear my two cents...
I do?
I think that we need to go back to two hours as planned, whatever that date was. It's either this week or...
I think it was today, yeah, it was October 1st, I think.
I think it was too, somewhere in that area.
I'm not, I'm not in favor of going back.
Okay, well, that's fine, but we decided six months ago or whatever it was.
Yeah, we already made that decision.
That's what was going to happen.
Right.
So the kiosk system, I don't have a problem with, in the hopes that it would solve some issues. However, as Mark mentioned, it would be nice to have a 15 or 30-minute free upfront parking so that people that are just running into a shop getting something wouldn't have to pay for a full hour when they just need to go grab something and go. And then third to that, that's, that's with the kiosk system. Third to that, going back again to Mark's point, if there's a way to set up just a scanning system and geographically set the areas accordingly, I don't think you have to hire another officer to do the enforcement because one officer's going to be so much more efficient. You pay for the equipment once, you don't pay for a second officer year over year over year. So that's, I know that's, that's not a solution. I just wanted to put my two cents out, so.
Can I throw one more thing in? And I think we've all talked about the 80, 100-pound gorilla in the room and that's a parking garage. I mean, I think, you know, if, if the city is serious about providing relief on the barrier island, then we ought to look at what is a feasible process for a, obtaining a parking garage. I mean...
I'd like to figure out, I have two, one on the north and one on the south. I'm not sure that's even possible, but you know, wishful thinking. But I'm not, I'm not opposed to that idea either.
I'm just, I'm putting it out there because I think if, if that... I'm just, I'm putting it out there because I think if that's something, and I think it really is something that, from the long-term perspective, we need to address. And, you know, we've seen parking garages that have been, you know, very well done that are practically invisible to the public, so, you know.
So, I get a little frustrated sometimes when it seems like we're about to do something and it's like, and it seems like things have been happening before and then it almost feels like now we're just, we're not gonna do anything. We're just gonna kick this one down the road again. And so, I'm a little frustrated by that. I think that, I understand that there's a capital investment for the kiosks, but if you're committed to doing this and actually trying to make this work, and I understand that you're stuck for five years if you do it, but, but if the, but if it actually pays for itself and it resolves the parking problems for these businesses that are coming to ask us, I'm in favor of doing something like that. But, I feel a little frustrated that now we're just gonna, okay, now we're gonna study it again. Usually, that's the way that everything gets eventually killed.
I'm not suggesting bailing on paid parking. I'm just saying, we need more information. Our directive tonight was from staff...
So, I guess my question is, how do we keep moving with this process while at the same time answering these additional questions we want without just, I would think we need, I think that, I think we need direction for the city as to what we need to do next. And where, I think that we need to find out, we need to get more, we need more details about the finances of it really, and the ability to do things like initial pay parking. We need to get some kind of estimate, a realistic estimate of what kind of revenue it's gonna generate to make sure that, there may be enough money in there that we can run the shuttle until we have the money to, to build a parking garage. But, I think even after you have a parking garage, you still need a shuttle. Because if we have a parking garage at the south end, then what if someone works up at Vera Beach Hotel? How are they gonna get there from the garage that's for employees? So, there, in order to make the system work, and this whole thing about, you know, government should not be in the parking business, we're in the parking business. We're already in the parking business. We're just doing a really bad job at it, okay? We're, we have free parking everywhere and we're not managing it very well. This is not intended for one bit to be a revenue stream for the city. This is not an enterprise fund idea. This is trying to solve a problem that the community has asked us to solve. And that's our job of being on the city council is to actually solve real problems that our community has, so...
Doing nothing's not gonna...
And doing nothing is what has happened all along, okay? We need to do something. We need to fix it.
So, Monty's looking for some direction, and he's offered, you know, pay and display, pay by space, and pay by plate. And my vote would be for pay by plate. Let's find out more about that system.
Okay, and at the same time, should we not, I'm gonna ask one more time. Just looking for y'all's opinion. Should we not do a study to figure out what the traffic patterns are of not only, and I'm not trying to delay because I know that would take time, but should we not do a study to find out the traffic patterns of beachgoers, shoppers, and employees?
Can our, can someone in our staff conduct some kind of like survey or some, without having to hire some consultant to come in and...
Yes, but...
Yes, but...
To have a realistic idea of the utilization of those parking spaces, we all know it happens February to the 1st of April. We can make estimates. We can go out there today and make estimates of what they are today, but those aren't gonna give us any real-time number of what we've actually got. We could have the gentleman for the police department that goes out there. We could sit down with him. He could take a map with him and he could tell us at a certain time and a certain day how many spaces we have available. But, then trying to extrapolate that data that we're gonna get in October to what it might be in February is the hard part.
Right. For me, like, doing the survey, I, there are people who say we don't have a parking problem. We heard them tonight. And there's people who're saying we have a terrible parking problem. My sense is that we have a bad parking problem in season. I personally experienced it, like if you, when Citrus was open, and they haven't been open for a year, remember that? If you wanted to go to Citrus for lunch, I, more than one time, I couldn't find, I couldn't get parked anywhere nearby. So, I went somewhere else. I went to, I went to Vera Beach Hotel and had lunch there because they have valet parking. It happens. Anyway.
We were saying that nothing was gonna happen. I think if you increase enforcement of the parking, that's action that being taken.
Okay. I just don't think it's, I don't think it's gonna solve the problem.
We're not saying it's gonna solve the problem. I'm just saying, let's do something tonight that could maybe help tomorrow.
And I would like to, you know, continue on the direction of gathering the rest of the information so we can make an intelligent decision about whether we wanna do something like this.
I agree.
Can't you take a vote in like, this conversation?
I mean, there's nothing for us to vote on right now. All we can do is direct staff to get us some answers, so, unless anyone...
Although, we could, we could vote to get those two hour signs back out and to...
If you guys, if I'm getting consensus at council, you want those signs changed, we'll start changing those. I have staff meeting in the morning at 7:45 if we're done here by then. And we'll start getting those signs changed. And then, to change the rates on the fines, the city attorney's looked it up, it's in the ordinance. We'd have to bring back the ordinance for you.
Yeah, you have to have first reading and second reading.
Right now, it's a $20 fine that does not increase as you, for the second offense. So, you wanna look at increasing the fine, and the city attorney could look and see if state law would allow an increasing rate for the second and third offense.
Yeah, parking is one of those things that is somewhat regulated by state law, so we'd have to take a look at those statutes to see if we can, how far we can go. Yeah, something, keep in mind, and this is for anybody out there that is removing chalk marks, or, we do have a violation. It's interference with overtime parking enforcement. If they do, that's a $100 fine if they're caught doing that.
So, the other thing that we need to find out about is, it was brought up about having the visual capacity to, which would increase, which you were talking about. And do we have a evaluation of what that would cost if we provided that to the city so that they can increase the...
So, you're looking to do some license plate recognition software for enforcement of traffic fines? Is that what you're...
Yes, sir.
We can explore that. I'd have to, we have not done that for that specific system.
I'm pretty sure, like, a few months ago, Chief Currie did look it up and I, and we can report back on what the cost of that system implementation is.
And do we, I mean, from the council's perspective, do we, I mean, am I just off on a tangent about asking for Cindy to give us a recommendation for a parking garage? Do we not wanna do that?
No, I'd love to. So, maybe, let's make a list of things here and you guys can pull them out as you want. Go back to two hours immediately. Learn more about the pay by plate system and get some real hard numbers on it so we can make an informed decision on what we wanna do next. Let's get some, I mean, Monty got us numbers on what the parking garage is gonna cost. We pretty much know that.
I don't, that's, what I'm looking for is a recommendation by the staff on a viable action that we could bring to the public that says, "This is a way that we can, you know, we can acquire or build a garage."
Give us some options on...
Whether it's a bond or whatever.
Taking out some debt or whatever that may be on a parking garage. And then, have Wayne work up ordinance, increasing parking fines. And we can review that once he's brought it back to us.
Of the, and just going back to the kiosk and the by plates, there were four companies that they talked to, but it sounded like they were recommending that we go with the, one of the two that does turnkey complete systems as opposed to the other two that are just vending, vendors for the kiosk. So, I would, I would prefer, I would like you to get the hard numbers, as we said, from both of those two turnkey companies. Is that what...
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Just two, three quick things that really help narrow down the hard numbers. I think I heard a consensus here that, like, the first half hour, the first hour free, is that what I'm hearing? Because I mean, these hourly rates make a difference to the number.
Hours too long. It'd be the first 15 minutes or half hour.
Half an hour?
Yeah.
I would ask them what they, what they do.
What they've seen before?
Yes.
And then, on all the spaces, Cardinal and Ocean as well?
I think you have to be fair.
I think we have to.
You have to do that.
Do both, okay.
If it's gonna be viable.
And any time limitations? We've been assuming like 12 hours, 6 to 6. Is that in the mindset is?
Yeah, it's too long.
Okay.
I think you'd have to do like a four hour max or something.
No, no, I'm sorry. For the hours, will there be a period of day when it's free? It just goes to free?
Yeah, no, I think there should be. I think it should end at 7:00.
Yeah, probably whatever they're standing, again, I would, we need some feedback from them, but assuming 7 to 7, Monday through Saturday.
Since John goes home.
7 to 7?
Sure.
And again, these are gonna be for broad-based answers.
Right, right. This is kinda like, because I've done numbers based on these kinds of things too.
I just don't know what the offset of cost is. As far as the parking garage goes, I have to channel Jim O'Connor. It's just a function of money. I mean, your options for paying for that without a revenue source are the same as your options for paying for street paving, stormwater. I mean, you have that once in sales tax the county was alluding to earlier, and there's already a finite amount of that. So, even if you were to finance it, it would have to be repaid through those funds or, you know, through the general fund and taxes. Really, the only source is under your control, so...
We need to escalate costs too.
Say again?
Escalate.
Right. I mean, eventually, for the parking garage, I see a referendum item to go to the public. The public's gotta make a decision if they want a parking garage on the beach.
And then, there would be, you know, borrowing and it would have to be paid for in some way. And I think, again, you know, the idea, at least the initial idea that we were coming to you with is how do we do this one thing to create money for the shuttle, potentially a parking garage, et cetera? You know, maybe those offset each other, so.
Okay.
I'll get you some numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We good?
So, signs will start going up. Two hour signs. We'll start putting those up this week.
Great.
We'll get you, get that started and then we'll get these other things that we talked about back to you that Jim will bring to you at the next meeting.
Okay. All right, so that's over. Before we move on to, I know it's getting late, but probably, as you noticed, I had to step out for a minute. Do you guys need a little break now that we're at 10 o'clock?
Five is fine.
Five's fine?
All right.
Yeah, I'm asking.
So, we'll take a recess until 10 o'clock.